We have no proclamations within the court.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for another day that you've given us and all of the blessings that go with it. We just thank you for this opportunity to come together as a community and discuss and deliberate the business of the city of Windsboro. We ask that you give us the knowledge and the wisdom we need to make the best decisions for the whole of Windsboro. Christ name with glory.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Do we have no proclamations within the court? So let's go on being to number five, staff reports. What we're also going to add is the volunteer fire department as well. So do we have anyone who can come forward with staff reports? Come on, Brenda.
It wouldn't be me without Brenda.
I know.
We got to hear about the good stuff.
Got to tell you. All right, all, so how are you? I love you all had the chance to see this.
We're happy to be here.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here, too. Did you all get to see all the pictures on the front of your stuff? All the pictures of Market Street? It is done. It is done.
Yay.
Kudos to staff, kudos to folks, kudos to Jody, kudos to the people that were on the street. Oh, my gosh. Yes, and it's fantastic. The last polls were set today, so the lights are strung all the way down to the bottom of the street. I don't know about you all, but I like it.
Yeah.
All right. I won't read through all of this because you guys can do that, and I know there's a lot on the agenda tonight. But I did want to share with you kind of how my life is transitioning because you guys need to know. Some of you have gotten to hear this from the EDC. I am transitioning out of my position as Main Street. What that will look like is I'm pulling back eight hours between now and December, and then in January I'll go on hourly from that point. Whenever the job is posted, whoever comes on board, if they're ready to hit the ground, guys, then they're ready to hit the ground. If they're not, we're going to do a pass off, and we'll be here as long as that, you know, needs to transpire and take place. Because right now, this town is growing, and it's in a good place. And it's just, you know, we don't want any hiccups with that. Reasons, well, I tell you, first of all, I'm not a whippersnapper anymore, and I was never more aware of that than this last, yes, retreat that we had with our state folks as we're sitting there with over half of our 90 Main Street people under the age of 30. And guys, I tell you, you know, they're really good at social media. I, and they get it. I could learn, but my heart is not there. I just, it's going to be very difficult for me. And, you know, that and on top of the fact, you know, my mother is now, she's been, she's been ill for a while, and now we're needing to take some time and take care of that, too. So y'all, I've got to tell you, I mean, I have absolutely loved being in this position. And I thank you for the opportunity, and I thank you for having the presence and the vision of mine as a council for having this in our town because it's amazing. And guys, it's fun. It is really fun to talk to people on the street, and when you ask them questions as to why they like Windsboro, and they go, well, there's just something about it, you know, something about it. Guys, that it is cool. It's very cool. So, and that's all about you guys, all right? So take the microphone with me. So anyway, that's really about all that I had. If you guys have any questions, though, I mean, I'm willing to entertain.
Just thank you for all you've done, Brenda.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Brenda, I'll say this. In your tenure as Main Street manager, you have done an outstanding job for Main Street. You have made a lasting impression on Windsboro and this town, this council. I think I speak for the entire council. Thank you for what you've done. And we hate to see you.
Okay, Commerce Market? Put your hands up at the microphone, come on.
Good evening, council. And Ms. Mayor, I apologize for this not being on the agenda. I'm still kind of getting used to getting this into you guys, so I just, I will need a reminder from month to month to know when to get it in. Basically, just want to give you a rundown of our last month, month of August. We made 11 EMS calls. We responded to four motor vehicle accidents, four smoke investigations. We had one vehicle fire, three structure fires, and eight brush fires, grass fires. We assisted the PD once, and then we had three mutual aid calls, which were two structure fires and one grass fire for a total of 35 runs for the month of August. Other business, our bylaws have us to elect the chief and assistant chief every year in our monthly meeting, business meeting in September, which goes into effect for October. I was reelected as chief again for the coming year. Billy Sossier was also put back in the position of assistant chief. He also serves as our secretary treasurer. We, in turn, the two of us, decide who our other officers are, which includes two lieutenants and two captains, and it'll probably be the same as it was this past year. So we did add one new member this last month. We had seven members attend this past Saturday. We had the Wood County Fire Chiefs School, which is a yearly school that the Wood County Chiefs, we put on in equipment. This year, it was on low angle and high angle rescue, which, believe it or not, we have equipment to do, to do such things on a very scaled-down, you know, process, but we do have the equipment for that, and the people that participated did very well. We also, this, just a couple of weeks ago, we're a little bit behind, but I was at the Wood County Fire Chiefs meeting last week, and I did obtain some burn ban signs, which I have put out kind of towards the outskirts of town so that people coming in and going out know that, because we have, we haven't already encountered somebody who's, oh, I didn't know we had a burn ban. So anyway, trying to, trying to get the word out. So that's all for us for this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all you guys doing.
Madam Mayor? I see Derek back there with the water department. Derek, would you come, come forward? I think we need to hear an update about our elevated tower rehabilitation project.
Yeah, I'll take that. Off of the tan.
Because a lot of, a lot of people have come in and have heard the rumors that the city's just repainting the water tower. Well, there's much more to that. I think the last time that tower was rehabbed was in 90s, and it's something that we're required to do by TCEQ standards.
Correct.
So can you give us an update on that project?
Yes, this was started before I was actually the chief plant operator, and there was regulations that we weren't up to standards on our water tower because it was built so long ago. So the contractors, they're, they've been hired to power wash the entire water tower and then sandblast the outside and the inside, and then repaint it and fix any damage to it. They found a few holes in it, possibly bullet holes, but they repaired those. That was last week. And I believe at the end of the week last week, they started sandblasting the inside. And that will get rid of all the rust, and we're repairing it where the plates are welded together, and it'll make it last another 25 years. And this doesn't happen that often. I don't know if, I definitely wasn't even alive the last time it was done.
The last time it was done was 93 or 94, because I remember.
Three, okay, I was alive, not since then.
You're one to talk.
But I talked to the contractors, and this was an estimate, he gave an estimated time for completion to be four weeks last Thursday. They do have a lot longer to complete the project, and that is dependent on the weather. And during this time, I'm sure everyone here has been inconvenienced by this. I think we fixed the pressure issue throughout the town. Plans are perfect until the time to go, and then we've adjusted. We're also doing a chlorine conversion during this time. It was basically to get it all done and inconvenience everyone as little as possible during this process, and that will help us, it's to better the water quality in the town for another year. And this is approved by TCEQ and is recommended by TCEQ at least once a year. So if you'll notice any discoloration or odor in the water, it is perfectly normal for this to happen during this process, but we're trying to, we're trying to flush all that out so it doesn't get to people's houses. That's it.
Listen, I got a question, just because everybody keeps asking. We need to just hire people, you know, down the road, come in here and say, these are certified individual staff.
Correct. There was a whole procedure. We went through KSA, and they've, they've given us the list of the people that they considered to work for this, and then we took the bid that was appropriate for us, and they were the most recommended by KSA. So yes, and it is not city workers doing the job.
No, it's not city workers.
We're not verified to go up on top of that, but yes.
Mark can show you how to climb up the tower safely.
Is it going to be the same design up there? Like, is this going to say, is this going to say something? Very cool.
It's going to be a surprise.
I like surprises, so.
Okay, any other staff reports? I don't want to miss anyone.
Yes, I wanted to let you know that the live stream is not working, but we are recording, so we will upload it after the meeting.
Okay. Okay, so this time we'll go into public comments section of the meeting, and here are those people that signed in before the meeting was called to order. I just have one name, Mr. Stokes.
Joe Stokes, 2441, CR 4200. I do want to commend the city on getting the water tower refurbished. I watched it go up when it was put up new, said in the night rating. Sure did. I'm hopeful that in the future, we can do some more street work, like the street that's done in front of the post office. Hopefully, we can get, since the storm's over, maybe we can go back and do some of what we're doing for, but that street is really nice.
Can we have a day on streets just for a quick, can you say?
Thank you for my call. Beginning to the years, we're still working on analyzing the plants for those, the streets that are remaining, have water infrastructure in them, and so they require an engineer to prepare those plants. The original was by the end of September, so it hasn't gone for a while, but.
Okay, so that one. Also, we're going to go to, uh, 7.1, the meeting. Did everybody get a chance to look over the minutes? The minutes, I think we had one for August meeting, August 10 meeting, and August 30 march meeting. Did everybody get a chance to read? Any questions or?
I'm going to move to accept the minutes as president.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go back. The meeting is 7.10. Consider resolution number 2023-22, authorizing a wet closure agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for the Autumn Trails Leachate Court.
Madam Mayor, since this is our annual housekeeping, we have to file with Texas every year for this event for Autumn Trails. I'll go ahead and make the motion that the city council approve resolution 2023-22.
Second.
Any further discussion? Paul and Purple?
Aye.
Yes, now, logic carries.
Easy text, don't get too excited.
Okay, so next, 7.3, consider resolution number 2023-23, amending the personnel policy. Okay, thank you. Everybody have a copy of this, and was y'all able to review it? So all great, any questions?
Madam Mayor, go ahead.
You start it.
I move that we approve that resolution number 2023-2023.
I know, it's kind of hard.
Amending the personnel policy.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Paul and Purple?
Aye.
Disagree? Okay, logic carries. I'm just doing great on this. Okay. Now we're going to be to the, um, someone who feels a somewhat consider right study factors, oh, consider water right study factors.
Another one, this actually works. Evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Jackson. I am a vice president of Willdan Financial Services out of Plano. I'm with my colleague Jason Laun, we're here tonight. We're the firm that the city hired to review both your current intended rate adjustment and to develop a new long-term rate plan for the city's water and wastewater utility. So I'm here tonight to present what I hope to be a very brief presentation to go over the results of our analysis and to present to you our recommendations for your rates for the next five-year period. So, like I said, I've got a relatively short presentation tonight. I'm going to go through it as quickly as possible. I want to start by talking a little bit about rates in general, then I want to talk about the city's customers and volumes, and then your revenue requirements. In other words, how much water are you producing, and how much does it cost you to produce it? Then we'll present to you a proposed rate plan for you to consider, and then we'll summarize with a few closing comments. So I always like to start out rate presentations by talking a little bit about what's going on in the industry, because I think it's very important for decision makers like yourselves and the general public to understand the forces at work in the water industry. Water is a business, like any other business. You know, you produce a product. Water is a product like a McDonald's hamburger, or a gallon of gasoline, or anything else. You want to run your water operation like a business, and so when costs go up, you've got no choice but to pass those costs through to your ultimate rate payer. But one of the advantages you have about business is that you, you're not in this to make a profit. You're in, all you're asking your rate payers to do is cover what it is costing you to provide that service. Well, guess what? Water costs are going up. They're going up all over the country and all over the world. The average utility has been raising its rates 5% to 6% every year. And the American Water Works Association forecasts that water and sewer rates across the country are going to triple in the next 15 years. Now, why is that happening? Pretty, pretty simple explanation. There are 7 billion people on the planet today. There were 1 billion people 100 years ago, but we've got the exact same amount of fresh water. So when that happens, water resources get strained and they get more expensive to produce. Now, I'm going to present to you some rate comparisons, going to show you what you're paying as opposed to what other areas, cities in this area are paying, but keep this in mind. 30 to 40% of utilities right now charge rates that don't cover their costs. So just because another utility's rates are lower than yours, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're running a more efficient operation. It might mean that they're subsidizing their water rates from their general fund. And finally, I think Derek's presentation was very, was very prudent because it shows that a lot of the reasons for rate increases are beyond your control. You know, you had a tower that you had to overhaul. I mean, you know, the water that you drink goes through that tower, so you want the thing to be refurbished every, every few years. Well, that's a good policy to have, but that costs money, and the city has to invest in that in order to ensure that you have a continued high quality of water service. Those kind of costs do push up water rates, and that is going to be one of the factors that we're going to talk about in a few minutes. Okay, I've talked about the industry in general. Let's talk about the city of Windsboro in particular. The city has not had a water rate adjustment since 2017, and as a matter of fact, that 2017 adjustment was just to cover your costs from Franklin Water Company. The last time you actually raised rates to cover your own personal costs was 2013 or 10 years ago. Think about that. Everybody else has been raising their rates 5% to 6% every year. You all haven't done an increase in a decade. I think that is remarkable. It's shown a great sensitivity to the fact that people don't want to pay more, but the problem is it's had a negative impact on your fund balance. It now means that your utility fund is recovering less than its costs, and so you've got to do an adjustment to make up the difference. Furthermore, costs are continuing to go up. Whether you raise rates or not, you know, costs, you're going to see higher costs. Look, due to inflation, cost of everything goes up 3% to 5% a year. It affects water just as much as it affects anybody else. Furthermore, whoops, sorry about that. Furthermore, the city intends to fund $7 million in further capital improvements in the next decade. That will improve the quality of your water service, but you know what? That money's got to come from somewhere. And so, in addition to the rate adjustment that you're about to implement, we're going to recommend that you implement a further series of adjustments over the next four to five years. Okay, so what are people paying for water service? Well, right now, the average person pays for water in two ways. They pay a minimum charge each month, and then they pay a volume charge for every 1,000 gallons of water they use. The vast majority of your customers have 5/8 inch meters. That's a typical residential connection. They pay a minimum charge of $27.98, and they get the first 1,000 gallons as, in that. After that, they pay a rate per 1,000 gallons that goes up the more you use. The idea of this is to, is to encourage conservation. We economists have a saying, if you raise the price of something, you get less of it. And so, if you put in a financial disincentive for greater amounts of water usage, people are going to use a little less water. Okay? On the sewer side, people pay a minimum charge of $18 a month, and again, they get the first 1,000 gallons, and of course, their usage is tied to their water usage, and then they pay a volume charge of $3 per 1,000 gallons. Now, what does that mean, and how does it compare to other utilities? Well, this is an important chart because this shows what an average rate payer here in the city of Windsboro pays compared to other cities in this area. The average customer here in the city uses less than 5,000 gallons a month. Now, obviously, you've got customers who use more than that. That's why they call it an average, but the majority of your customers usually use less than 5,000 gallons. So when we look at 5,000 gallons of water and sewer service, a Windsboro customer pays $81.78 for that. Your rates are right about where you'd expect them to be. You're higher than some, you're lower than others. Interestingly enough, though, you're almost 20% below the state average. So while you are higher than a few other communities like Silver Springs and Gilmer and Pittsburgh, you're at or below Greenville Commerce, Mineola, cities like Mount Vernon. What, what this basically says is your rates are right about where you'd expect them to be. It also shows that rate payers here do not pay water rates that are disproportionate to what people here in the state of Texas pay for water service. I know a lot of people think they do, they do, and every community, they think they do, but the fact of the matter is, your water rates are right about where you'd expect them to be. Okay, just a couple of quick background charts. How many customers do you have? You have about 1,638 water accounts. To no great surprise, the vast majority of them are residential. You have about 1,476 wastewater accounts. We did a 10-year forecast, and the forecast assumes very little growth, just nominal account growth over the next decade. This chart is interesting, at least to water nerds like me, because this shows how people use water here in the city. Interestingly enough, 90% of your meters are residential, but only 30% of your usage is residential. You've got some industrial customers that use an enormous amount of water here. That's a good thing, because water is a product that is a bulk, classic bulk commodity. The more you sell, the less it costs to, to, the less you have to charge to every individual customer. So the fact that you have some of these industrial customers, like Keller's Creamery and other big users like that, they're benefiting everybody in the city, because by buying more water, they're reducing the cost to everybody else. So I call it the Sam's Club motto, you know, where you get those big, big tins of cottage cheese, you know? The more you buy, the less it costs per, per tin. As far as water consumption is concerned, in the current year, you sold about 201 million gallons of water. That number's actually been creeping up in prior, in past years. Main reason is that the last couple of years have been abnormally warm, you know? Some, in some senses, it's not that hard to predict water usage. All you have to do is tell me how hot it's going to be and how much it's going to rain. You tell me that, and I'll tell you how much water you're going to sell. But what this shows is that we're projecting that your water usage of 200 million gallons is probably going to stay about the same over the next decade. Okay, now let's talk a little bit about your costs. Well, you're a business. Businesses, costs go up. So we're forecasting that your costs, just due to inflation, are going to increase under most of your budget elements by about 3% to 5% a year. We have a international rate model that we use that has the ability to project every single expense item in your budget, and most of those items are going to go up at an inflation rate. However, there is one factor more than anything else that's going to impact what your future rates are going to be, and that is your need for future capital improvements to repair, maintain, and overhaul your water and sewer system, just like the water tower. We're projecting, based on discussions with staff, that you're going to have to spend about $7 million to overhaul and improve your water system. Now, the bad news is that $7 million has to come from somebody. The good news is it is a direct investment in the future of the city. The assets that you use, that you purchase and that you create with that $7 million directly benefits everybody in the city. And like the water tower, it's going to be in use for decades. So you spend the money today, and you, not only yourselves, but future generations of customers are going to be able to benefit from that. So that is going to be the biggest factor in your rate plan. What are your water projects? Well, you've got a water treatment plant overhaul of about $4 million that you're looking at in the next five years, some basic public works projects, and then a wastewater treatment plant overhaul of about $2.5 million. So as you can see, $7 million is needed. Well, to no great surprise, you don't have $7 million. So how do you pay for it? You got to borrow it. And so we're anticipating that on or about 2025, you're going to issue a bond for $7 million, and you have to have rates in place that will pay off the debt service from the bonds. Obviously, the bond people aren't going to let you issue a bond unless they can, unless you can prove to them that you can pay for. And so this rate plan is going to, is going to take that into consideration. This right here, this very colorful chart here, shows that your costs are generally going to be increasing over the next 10 years. What's important about this chart is you look at the red portion of the bar chart, that's your debt service. You can see it becomes a bigger and bigger portion over the next eight to 10 years, but the good news is by 2032, some of your existing debt's going to retire, and so that's going to benefit your rate payers. Of course, 2032 is a long time from now, so you have to plan for the next decade. So let's get to the proposed rate plan. As everybody knows, the city is in the process now of adopting a new rate for October of 2023. We reviewed the rate, and we believe that it is exactly the right thing for the city to do at this time. You know, your city, your, your water and sewer budget has kind of fallen below, your revenues are not covering all your expenses. The thing is, what many cities do is they try to hold off for many, many years before they do a rate adjustment, and that is beneficial to the community, but the problem is it tends to delay the inevitable, and it makes the inevitable rate adjustment all that much higher. So remember, you haven't had an effective rate increase in 10 years, and so that's one of the reasons why the rate adjustment now has to be a little bit higher, because costs have been going up over the last 10 years, but you, your revenues haven't been able to cover it. This rate adjustment that you're going to implement is definitely needed. However, we also recommend that you, that after 2023, you implement a four-year rate plan with additional annual adjustments in October of 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027. So first, I'm going to show you the rates that we recommend, then I'll show you the more important chart, and that is the impact on average rate payers. This chart right here shows you what the current rates are and what the project, what the increase is that will be adopted for October of 2023. We then recommend that you do a series of 3% to 5% rate adjustments each year in the, on your water system with slightly higher adjustments. year on your water system with slightly higher adjustments on the wastewater system. Now, what does this mean in terms of what people will pay? This shows right here what the actual rates would be. The question everybody wants to know is, what does it mean in terms of my bill? Remember when I told you that the average rate payer uses 5,000 gallons a month? Under this chart right here, what it shows is that currently, that average rate payer is paying $81.78 a month. This unfortunate large increase is going to increase their monthly bill by about $15, effective in October of 2023. After that, you're looking at annual adjustments that will increase their bills about $6 a month each year over the next four years. That's about a six, five to six percent annual rate adjustment. Now, obviously, if you use more water, your bill will go up a little bit more. But the other thing is to keep in mind is that even with the adjustment that you're putting in place right now, you're still going to be below the state average. Your rate of, your monthly bill of $81.78 would go up to $96.90 and would still be below the state average. I'll tell you one thing, everybody else is going to be raising the rates too over the next five years. I know that because I get a lot of phone calls from them, because all of them are facing the same kind of cost pressures you are. I hate to take these very complex rate plans and try to summarize it in terms of one or two numbers, but after this October 23 rate adjustment, the average bill will probably go up about $6 a month for each of your customers each year for the next four years. So you'll be happy to know that I'm on my last slide. Obviously, look, it's never easy to ask people to pay more. Nobody wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason. However, adopting both the adjustment for October of 2023 and a new four-year rate plan would be very beneficial for the city and for the rate payers themselves. You might ask the question, how could that, well, how could it be beneficial to raise rates on everybody? Well, if you do this, and if you adopt this plan, it will ensure that the water utility will be able to fund all of its costs. Remember, all you're asking your rate payers to do is reimburse you for what it's costing you, and this rate plan will enable you to do it without forcing you to subsidize your water fund from your general fund. You know, a lot of utilities do that. A lot of utilities subsidize from their general fund, but the problem with subsidies, as a famous politician once said, is that you, after a while, you run out of other people's money. And so, that's why it's good to have a water rate that covers all of your costs. Another benefit of it is it will enable you to invest $7 million in the future of the city. And finally, that will enable you to provide safe drinking water that is of high quality here in the state. So what we would recommend that you do is, after you adopt this plan, that at a future council meeting, you adopt a new ordinance with the four-year rate plan in it. It's one ordinance, it's one vote, and it is four years of additional rate adjustments. I really appreciate you allowing me to prattle on as long as I have. I have been answering the questions you have this time.
I thought that was very thorough. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. That was easy. All right. All right. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So McKenzie, with our current rate in effect that we have right now, are we having to do any subsidization from the general fund? You need a hammer? Are we having to do any subsidies from the general fund or fund balance or anything like that that is detrimental to the utility fund?
No. This current budget that you all be considering for adoption this evening, we're moving all of the subsidies, which was a requirement in order to get the general fund balance this year.
But we have been having to subsidize the water fund from the general. Do you know what number off the top of your head?
$750,000.
That we've had to take from the general fund, that we could use somewhere else?
There were $250,000 that I just needed. From the general fund is a half million. The other 250 was just an existing deficit on their side.
And Hendrick, about this, you can't run something like a utility business in a F-12 facility, a utility service.
Anybody else have any questions on that? I do believe that was just a, um, um, I didn't tell us anything. I don't think there was any action there.
The resolution will come up for you all. Thanks for announcing for the direction you're going.
So, okay, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you coming. So next, we're going to move on to 8.2, notification of rate increase from public services, which I believe this is cashbacked off?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, Councilman and Staff, I'm Gene Keenan. I'm here this evening to explain the best I can what the current rate increase is going to be for, and it's similar to what was just being told. It's hit everywhere. I actually, because of the storm, I actually put in a request to not pass one on this year, and I got turned down for that, mainly because our industry is hit pretty hard right now with this 40-year high inflation. It's, our finance team says we're actually about 18% cost deficit right now ourselves just because of the insurance and the fuel and all the things that go along, the labor. We didn't expect to have to raise our labor rates, but we had to go up $468,000 last year to keep them from going to work at Buc-E's. I mean, it's, you know, it's tough right now to get help, but all of that together, you know, it was, I had another idea. I said, well, I talked to Ms. Lyons and Ms. Pike. I said, let's, if you want to, I know I have to give 60-day notice, but if you'll waive that, let's wait and see what it is next month. Maybe it'll be lower. We'll use that one. Well, it went up. So, and then I checked today, and it went, it's up higher than 5.7%. So I don't see that being any relief right now, but the way we come about our annual rate increases is by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and I think you were provided with that information as well. It comes from the government, and it's on the water sewer trash. And I might add, after watching his presentation, that his numbers were right there. A lot of cities now use the same method I do to raise their water and sewer rates annually rather than waiting 10 years. I heard a story similar to this just last night in another council meeting in a town with 250 people in it that's got to come up with 3.5 million dollars. And it's going, and they haven't raised their rates enough to, anyway, that's, I'm not going to go there, but that's the reason that we're at today, and it's the 5.7, and it is according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics Water Sewer Trash Index, and that's how we do it each year. And I'll answer any questions you have. I know most of you here are new from when we started this three years ago, maybe one is still here. But as you can imagine, our insurance really took a hike this year. The waste industry is in the top five most hazardous occupations as far as fatalities, and we're getting a real big hit on our insurance this year as well. I know TML, I don't know if you're in the risk pool, but I know it's gone up this year, surprised a lot of people. It's just crazy how everything has gone up. It's not, like he said, it's not something you like going to do, going to ask people for more money, especially when times are hard. Personally, I'm feeling it.
Do you have any service adjustments within our existing contract that could be adjusted to offset the increase?
Well, you know, we, whenever we first did this three years ago, there were five options, and the council picked the Cadillac. And this city has more service than any other city I have. I have 32 cities, and you have two-time-a-week cart service, you have once-a-week recycle, you have once-a-week bulk pickup. I mean, that is, that is, this should be the cleanest city in East Texas. So, but it's, we can, we can go in and we can try to, the only thing that I'm cautious a little bit about, because I've just bid on two other cities, your commercial rates are significantly lower than what the new bids are today. So that could be a problem, but I would love to look at it and try to do whatever I can to help out. But that's what...
Is there any council where there are options?
There's, you know, most cities now are one-time-a-week cart service, and it just takes a little while to get used to that, but, and then on the recycle, it's typically every other week, because we're in the South. We're not like some of the other states where they're real big on recycling and they are, like it's a religion almost. I mean, we have very low participation rate for recycling in the South here, and it's all over. It's not just here in East Texas. But, and then as far as the bulk, the same thing. We have cities that do once-a-month bulk, and we have cities that do two-time-a-month bulk. You still have the same amount every month, because they still, they just wait to put it out then, but, so there are some options. And if you directed your city administrator to look into that, I'd be glad to visit and do whatever I can, if that's the option that you're trying to look at.
That's what I would like to see. I would like to know what it would be for trash pickup once a week and maybe the brush every other, what'd you say, once a month, or is what we have now?
It could be, it's whatever you think you're, I mean, it's unfortunate, it just breaks my heart to see Windsboro in the shape it is right now with all this trees, how you did not get some kind of disaster designation and relief funds. I will never understand that.
Well, another consideration too is the roads. I mean, those trucks on the roads three times a week is a lot.
Three times a week, that's almost as much as the school buses.
I know a lot of people, you know, those cans are large, and we have a lot of single people or little old couples that...
Right, have two little Walmart sacks.
Takes them three weeks to fill that can, but they're going to haul it out there every time anyway, just because it's trash day.
You are right.
Are those people that need two times a week?
They get an extra cart. You get an extra cart. It's, I think, I don't know, it's three or $4 here, I don't know what the city charges, but it's an extra cart, and you just put it next to that one, and that's for the overflow. So it's kind of a pay-as-you-throw type service. For those who have the larger families and have more trash, they pay just a little more, but it doesn't penalize the senior citizens or the ones, so...
Do you remember the five plans originally three years ago about what the savings would have been, instead of going with the Cadillac, to go with like the middle of the road, just a ballpark?
Actually brought them. It went from $13.10 a month up to $20 a month, and this is, this was the $20 a month.
So that's like a 30% increase.
Yeah, I brought them just in case someone asked, because I was, and that was the other thing. This is the only time I've ever had to do five performance for a bid, but it's what, you know, just wanted to look at all options and see what was going to be best for the citizens.
We appreciate that.
You give her some idea, like you want, you want the every other week recycling, or every other month recyc, every other week recycling, I'm sorry, and the once-a-month bulk or the every, every other week bulk, just kind of pick, I mean, you can narrow that thing down, you know, or just don't do recycling at all. There's some that's eliminated that. You know, there was a time where recycling, see, I have to pay $65 a ton to get them to take our recycling. It cost me $36 a ton to bury it, but recycling cost me double to get rid of it, because it has to go to a MRF, a recycle center.
I would like to know how many recycle bins are given out for this town. I don't know of anybody that recycles.
I can get that number for you.
It might be worth...
And I'll get it, I'll make sure Ms. Lyons has that.
We do have the new recycle bins at the Walmart park in the line, Silver Springs.
Yeah, we do, we do.
Yeah, they take all sorts of hard plastics, soft plastics, papers, cardboard. It's brought out by the highway in Silver Springs, Walmart. They don't take glass, nobody takes glass.
Nobody takes glass, because it's commingled now, and the recycle centers, it's, they sort it, it's all mixed together, and when there's glass, it breaks, and the glass will get in the jugs, and it just causes a real bad problem, and it's a hazard for the workers that are up there picking off the vines. So in the old days, you kept everything separate. I say the old days, I've been doing this 30 years. So, yeah, I was feeling, I was feeling y'all's pain a minute ago about that water tower and watched it go, you put in, but in the old days, you had to, you had to separate every plastic and then every paper and every metal can. Now, it all goes together, commingled, and it runs all on the same conveyor belt, and then there's people that pick it, you know? And then there's some machine, mechanical, some electronic eyes and things like that. It's come a long ways in 30 years, for sure.
So could you, McKenzie, give us some more ideas?
Sure. Be glad to do that. Anytime you need to get in touch with me, she knows how to get in touch with me as well.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Okay, so let's go to 8.3, Consider Fee Waiver Request by Autumn Trails Association.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Tex Willis with the Autumn Trails Association, PO Box 464, Windsboro, Texas 75494. How y'all doing this evening?
Hang on a second. Easy, Tex. Easy.
Easy.
You know, God made us all different, so let's see, made more different. Okay, we're requesting our fee waiver that we do every year for the use of the park and facilities for our Autumn Trails events, which we're bringing people in, and we have the Civic Center on Saturday, October 21st, the Depot on Saturday, October 28th, Jack Cross Pavilion on Saturday, October 28th, and the Civic Center again that weekend.
That's your needy.
Well, we have a lot of people we're bringing in, and they're needy too, so we're just asking for some fee waiver requests to help us out. Our, got some good news, our board has kind of dwindled down, and all of a sudden, it like grew. I've got like people here on the board with me tonight, too. We're like doing all kinds of stuff, we're adding stuff, we got a, we got the world's hottest pepper in Windsboro here, and we're bringing a hot pepper eating contest. You know, these guys ride the circuit like bull riding and barrel racing, eating peppers.
Really?
Yeah, so that 8,000 people we're bringing in, we may be bringing 80,000. How many people, huh? Who knows? They're on a circuit, and they're coming for Autumn Trails, so we're excited, we've got some new stuff going on.
Tex, I have to say this, under your leadership and guidance, Autumn Trails is starting to get some life back in it. There were those few years where everything kind of calmed down a little bit, but you're bringing in some stuff, your mustache and beard growing contests.
That was from like the 70s. We brought that back six years ago, so we're trying.
The pepper eating, Mark, you need to be on standby for that.
You say that, actually, part of their rule, they have to have medics on standby. But this is even before that. That's part of their, part of their...
But I'm happy to see what Autumn Trails is becoming and the new stuff that's coming in and all the involvement and everything.
It's a lot of work on our board, but I got the greatest board ever.
Yeah, but again, this is our annual paperwork for your fee waivers, so Madam Mayor, I make the motion that the council approve the fee waiver request by the Autumn Trails Association.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you close?
Woo, thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to 8.4, Consider Fee Waiver Request by Autumn Trails Association.
Hello. I'm never talking to a microphone. I teach high schoolers, I just yell. I'm Becky Morris. I am here representing Beta Zeta Psi. We are a local...
We need to separate testings.
Oh, I thought it was just either. I'm 4413, County Road 4660. I'm four four one three, County Road forty-six sixty. Um, Beta Zeta is a local services organization whose purpose is to strengthen and celebrate the Winsboro community by helping individuals and families. We partner with local public service, um, agencies and we also just do a lot of individual, um, things like just this week, we've, um, purchased several items of need for some of our special needs elementary students. We do a lot of behind the scenes, uh, work that you might not hear a lot about. But normally our fundraiser is the Little Miss Autumn Pageant. We've done that for thirty plus years, but we're changing things up this year and that is why we need your help. We're doing a designer bag bingo. Uh, it's slated for September twenty-fifth. We're partnering with the Winsboro Community Resource Center and Food Pantry. Uh, we'll be having a canned food drive at the event as well as making what we hope is a substantial monetary contribution to the WCRC. Uh, we also donate, as I mentioned, several, to several other community projects and various community members in need throughout the year. So if the City of Winsboro allows us to use the Civic Center at no charge for our event on September twenty-fifth, we ensure, it would ensure that we are able to reach even more members of the community with our charitable contributions. Thank you for consideration.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I, I have some discussion. Um, first of all, I love the pageant and I've heard a lot of what y'all do as an organization. I think it's great. Uh, and I know we just waived the fees for Autumn Trails as well, uh, but we, we did that because they bring in so much revenue to our community throughout that entire month. Um, and those events are being held to bring in people.
Right.
Um, this being a fundraiser to me, um, and, and looking back and talking with Mackenzie, we've spent forty, we've waived forty-eight thousand dollars worth of fees in the last three years. Um, and we've talked about budget a lot, that, those, that money coming back into us would be great.
I understand, I understand that. Um, and as we do not bring, we're not bringing people and income into the community, but what we do provide is offsetting expenses for community members who, who cannot afford things. All of our sorority members volunteer time, um, organizing these events, the Little Pageant and, and now this purse bingo, completely out of.
How many tables have y'all sold already?
We have sold, pull that up. Well, we're sold out of tables. Um, trying to find how many that is.
So what I'm getting at with the tables is you've sold all of your tables already, which is three hundred dollars per table.
Per table.
I mean, the fee's two hundred and fifty dollars and if we continue to set a precedence of waiving fee after fee after fee, then why, why even have the fees?
Correct.
Um, and so I don't believe we should waive the full fee, maybe a percentage of the fee, um, as we move forward on this, um, just because that fee is set in place to help us offset electrical costs, utility costs, and we know utility costs are going up.
And I understand, um, your point, of course, we've been hearing all about how everything's going up, inflation, um, I just would, would hope that you would consider our organization different than pers-, like a prom per se, when that's just pure entertainment. Yes, it does service the community, but we are a full service sorority. That's, that's all we do.
Yeah. Um, and, and I'm not taking anything away from what y'all do. I just feel like we have to set a standard of what we're going to allow these fees to be processed. So I, I don't think that we should move forward on, um, waiving this fee fully.
I would be in favor of a reduction myself.
We have to vote on this.
Yeah. Maybe fifty percent reduction in fee for service organizations and nonprofits in the future.
Okay, so I have a question. Mackenzie? We've already made a, um, motion to vote in a second. So we have to vote against that.
Or you can have an amended motion. You can have an amended motion, see if it's second.
I'll just amend it. I move to amend the main motion by not waiving the full fee, but only fifty percent of the fee.
I'll second that.
Can I take your vote? Can I take your vote? You take a vote on the amended motion.
Okay, so is there any additional questions? Okay, so we're gonna vote to amend the motion first?
You take your amended motion and take the vote and see if that goes.
Okay, so all of those are approval for the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any guests?
No.
Okay, so we have three, four, and two guests. So now this time we're gonna, I've never put this up.
Yay me!
So you just voted on it again. Then now it's the main motion. The amendment is now the main motion.
Okay, I don't have a second.
See, you already did that.
I second.
Oh, you did? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so all of those are approval of the amended motion, uh, passed, uh, the fee waived.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you.
What new stuff on there? So, okay, let's move on to eight point five. Consider approval of WEDC action for incentive, incentive application for promised land grant. Uh, did everybody get a chance to read this?
I, I need some clarification. So it says, consider this, so if we, they've already voted as the EDC to pass this and so would we have to vote on that issue or is this just a, okay?
I move that we consider the approval of the WEDC action for incentive application for promised land. They agree.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just, as I can't remember, I remember when this came in. Right after you opened, the storm hit and it's been very damaging. I saw the damage under your store. Uh, have, Mackenzie, are there, have there been any other incentives to promised land from EDC? I can't remember, okay. I couldn't remember if there was or not.
She'd already done the work in EDC, all her back, her bird, she had to ask for it before you do the work. So she'd already done everything and everything she's done.
Okay.
So there's a silver lining for her in this storm.
By the way, you're, you're so welcome to practice for me.
That was the commercial part of the meeting.
Yeah.
It's really good this morning.
Okay, so the appeal of the, uh, request is fifty thousand dollar business grant. That is probably the EDC, WEDC approved.
I, I, I know the storm wasn't classified as like a tornado, so I know that had effects on insurance. Was there insurance policy filed to help with the damages? So was there an insurance? Did you get some insurance from the damage? Because I know that there's sometimes clauses.
Significant.
And so did that just not?
But what's in the grant, the business is not covered by insurance.
And that would be?
To repair the mural and new, um, signage. I lost what signage I had. The new mural will have some signage on it. And some electrical costs that insurance would not cover. And then some additional funds towards, um, business expenses that are not covered by insurance.
I think, in case anyone isn't aware, I think the whole roof's just.
It went a block over.
Yeah.
I saw the.
But yes, no, this is funds not covered by insurance.
I mean, keep us from how, I mean, all I could see was the roof that was supposed to be on top of your building was laying over here.
Well, and the, the hard part was that all my storage was up there. The electrical had been run up there, so that all went across the street. So all the water was able to come in and fill everything. So we were able to get everything out as quickly as possible, but there were several, uh, appliances that were damaged. And of course, all the product, all the paper product, you know, everything, business cards, menus, um, the flooring.
It was like starting over.
And then painting, yeah. Yeah, we gutted it and started over. I mean, the plumbing was still good, but, uh, drywall, everything molded and painting, all the insulation went with the roof. All that was new. Such good insulation.
Is this fifteen thousand gonna be enough?
Well, it, I'm gonna, I'd hope to put it towards, I mean, it would've been nice to get the full requested amount, but I'm very thankful for.
Thank you, Diane. When are you gonna open again?
Today.
They opened today.
I've been on vacation.
We sold out. I am, we're now, I came straight here, we're making everything for tomorrow.
Good, good.
Yeah.
I've been gone a week, so catch me up.
It was wonderful.
Good.
Okay.
There's already been a motion. This board made a motion and CJ seconded it.
Okay. So any further discussion? All in approval?
Aye.
Aye. We're just glad to see you're back.
Yeah.
Providing, providing the sweet treats.
Okay, so let's see where we're now. I think six, consider reappointment of WEDC for directors.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that City Council approves the reappointment of the WEDC, board directors, as presented by the EDC.
I second.
Okay, any additional, um, discussion? Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let's do eight point seven. Consider resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, authorizing professional service provider for resilient communities critically.
What's his name?
Mackenzie.
This has to do with the general land all this during opportunity that I spoke briefly down at the last meeting. So I'm excited about the grant to do a match, it gives us an opportunity to do a certain list of things that I believe would be the best interest of the city, like adopting codes. Other things are master plan implementation of flood damage prevention ordinances, new zoning ordinances, things like that, that normally you would have to pay the officials to come and do. If we're awarded these funds, this would pay for that one hundred percent because there's no match. So part of the process is you have to, during that period of administration, we had to submit a list, grant works and trailer and associates. So the score committee got together and they got a resolution from ULC that trailer was to be the recommendation of the score committee.
I move to accept the recommendation of trailer and associates.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we're moving on to eight point eight. Public hearing proposed funding for year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I think we are all familiar with this. Mackenzie, a couple of the, uh, five years to all of the, uh, together.
We just opened the floor for the public for that should be here and then we'll see if they.
Okay, this time, if you want to walk to the cabin space, probably cut it up. Here? Anyone? No? Okay, so. Don't leave me the motion on that this time.
I just opened it here at six thirty-six.
Okay, yeah, close, close the door again at six thirty-six. So here we're gonna move on to eight point, no, actually, we're gonna move on to eight point nine. Consider ordinance number ten sixty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Excuse me, do you have anything you need to add to it?
I was gonna add that on the revenue portion, when I exported that from our financial software, if you'll notice, there are a couple of line items. Four, that just say revenue. That was just something that happened here when we were exporting that. The final, that will go to the company, we posted online, we'll have the actual name of corporate revenue line item. We don't have four line items that just say revenue that are assigned to, to you think, but it did not export correctly.
So Madam Mayor, I make the motion that council approve ordinance ten sixty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, this will be a call back. Um, King?
Hi.
Four.
Oh, four, sorry.
Lauren?
Ford.
Patrick?
Ford.
Perry?
Ford.
Halliwell?
Ford.
Any opposed? So now we're moving on to eight point six. Public hearing's proposed tax rate of zero point five six four one, a hundred for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Public hearing gets six thirty-eight. Do we have anyone that was just going forward? No one?
I just wanted to take an opportunity to explain, on the budget cover credit, you're gonna see some language that, that looks a little weird. It's, we are required by tax code to tell the public that we are increasing their taxes because it compares this year's known revenue to this year voter approval rates. And then the next statement will, you will say that your taxes are actually going down on a hundred thousand dollar valuation by thirty-nine dollars. And so it's a little bit confusing. There's one of the, it's not, it's not a typo, it's just the way the tax code works. If your appraisal didn't go up, you're gonna have a cost savings. Uh, there was also legislation that passed in two thousand nineteen, we talked about that with our financial advisors this morning, that requires any, what they consider excess collections, be it delinquent or anything that's passed through, that's paid, a hundred percent of that now is going to reduce your tax rate and has to go to your INS collection. So all of those things, even though we're adopting the voter approval rate, which is an increase compared to the known revenue rate, is being suppressed by what they're considering excess collection due to legislation passed in two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Okay, so no comments, because the public hearing has six forty. So let's move on to eight point eleven. Consider ordinance number ten seventy dash twenty twenty-three, adopting the tax rate for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Madam Mayor, I move the council authorize ordinance number ten seventy dash twenty twenty-three, approving the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point five six four one percent, which is effectively a three point four eight nine percent increase in the tax rate. which is effectively a three point four eight nine percent increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Okay, once again, this will be a call of vote. Four ordinance, King?
Four.
Cory?
Four.
Patrick?
Four.
Parrish?
Four.
Hollowell? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're moving on to eight point twelve. Request tax rate ratification for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, ending September 30th, 2024.
Madam Mayor, I move the Council approve and ratify the tax rate of zero point five six four one percent for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending on September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Angie, does this report, all set up?
There's not a resolution, there's actually.
Oh, okay. Okay, so this will be called, call two, have a first and second, yes? King?
Four.
Cory?
Four.
Patrick?
Four.
Parrish?
Four.
Hollowell?
Four.
Motion carries. Eight point thirteen, this time we'll call the second session. For sent exception, five five nine dash zero seven four, for the Texas government personnel matters. The City Council will convene in front of closed session, discuss the police chief, police captain positions at six forty-two. Let's hear it, the upper chamber, please.